Looks like we're all set. Good evening, everybody. Apologize here. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Bridgewater Town Council. It is Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. And ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance.
The United States for America, to the Republic for which it stands.
Okay, moving on, we have a few condolences this evening, certainly on behalf of the town council to the family of Ronald L. Wagman. Upon his passing on the second of January 2022, Mr. Wagman served the United States Marine Corps during the Vietnam War. He was the founder and proud owner of the Bridgewater Recycling for over 50 years, as well as supported youth activities and readily contributed to local charities throughout his business career. On behalf of the town council to the family of Charles Alasian, upon his passing on the 23rd of December 2021, Mr. Alasian served with combat engagements in the United States Navy during the Vietnam War. On behalf of the Bridgewater Town Council, the family of John J. Deliro, upon his passing on the 17th of December 2021, Mr. DiLoretto served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. And also wanted to briefly mention to our former colleague, Tim Fitzgivens, on the passing of his father, Dr. Robert Fitzgivens, resident of Bridgewater for over 50 years. With that, I'd like to just take a brief moment of silence to recognize all those veterans and first responders who have passed. Hey, as a reminder, tonight's meeting is being aired live and recorded. Pursuant to section 20 of chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, this meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. First item on the agenda tonight is approval of our minutes from our previous meeting on January 4th, 2022. Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
The discussion. I see none move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Next item B, announcements from the president. I do not have any this evening. Next item is C, proclamations. We have none this evening. Next item is item D, citizens' open forum. Open it up for citizens, open forum, any citizens wishing to speak. During citizens' open forum, I see Ms. Neary, if you'd like, just your name and address and Happy New Year.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, Pat Neary, Lakeside Drive. I just have a few comments. At your last meeting, council meeting, on January 4th. Hello?
Ms. Neary, you're all set. I apologize. It was someone had their unmuted.
Okay. At the last meeting, Mr. Ivaldi spoke during citizens' open forum, and I wanted to reiterate his important comments regarding suggested interaction by council members with the residents of our town. He made some very cogent statements, and I'm just actually confirming them. I realize that we will have some new council members because of redistricting this spring. However, some of you will hopefully be returning to represent your districts. For those of you returning, it is critical that you represent your residents. It should not be your personal preference that decides your vote on any matter. You will be there to represent your residents. I know you know that. But please gather input from citizens on whatever issue you do and do your homework. Since we don't have town meeting any longer, citizens need to be heard. We still need to be heard. Your political party is of little consequence. You will be representing us, and please keep that in mind and take your responsibility seriously. I also want to quickly mention that Councilor Moore's vision that was presented that evening for our town is very encouraging. However, I did not see the subject of environment. The word environment was not mentioned. This is a critical subject that we must address and act upon. Please do not rubber stamp any vision that doesn't include the word or address our environment. As one of our environmental advocates, Kitty Doherty, has stated, each and every one of us is a steward of our environment, and our attitude and actions must reflect this. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Neary. Do we have any other citizens for citizens' open forum wishing to speak? Deborah, I do not see any others on my screen.
Nor do I.
Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda E, appointments. We have none this evening. Next item on the agenda is F, hearings. We have two hearings this evening. It is 7:08. Go ahead and open hearing order 0FY22-033, loan order for upgrade of wastewater treatment facility. The Budget and Finance Committee did not meet this evening, and the FinCom voted 7:02 approve. I am going to go ahead and defer to the town manager.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. So as the president said, the budget and finance did not meet tonight, so the council will not vote, but we can still have the hearing and by way of introduction to our OPM on the project, I'll just sort of lay out a little bit of the background of the sewer plant upgrades, which is the appropriation and the bonding authorization you got in front of you. As you know, I think as the council knows, sewer plant upgrades have been on the radar for probably the last, at least the last nine years, if not longer. Our comprehensive wastewater management plan was approved by DEP, and most of all of the work that's contemplated by the by the authorization was was in that comprehensive wastewater plan was approved by DEP. On a separate track, we were issued a draft discharge permit by the DEP and EPA, and I think as the counselors may know, that happens usually about a five-year basis. It is a discharge permit is the governs the amount and the quality of discharge that we can make into the Taunton River from our wastewater plant. In any case, the draft discharge permit issued by DEP and EPA significantly tightened the levels of nitrogen and phosphorus that we could discharge. When we saw the draft discharge permit, we consulted with an attorney, Washington DC-based attorney, formerly deputy administrator at the EPA, and she recommended that we sue the DEP and EPA, arguing that trying to achieve those strict levels was really impossible within the timeframe that the permit had laid out. So we ended up settling that case by agreeing to it. Believe it was a 10-year period to achieve discharge numbers for phosphorus and a seven-year period for nitrogen. In order to meet the specific progress benchmarks, benchmarks laid out by DEP and to ensure that we would be eligible for state state grant and loan funding, we asked for, and the council did vote, an appropriation and bond authorization. So this is certainly not the first time you've seen this language. That prior authorization, two prior authorizations were based upon the early stage cost estimates. So I just would note for the benefit of the counselors, early stages of the project, the DEP requires appropriations to allow the project to advance to future rounds of state loan programs. So at these early stages, the actual project is really years away. So in any case, we about a year ago brought on environmental partners to be our owner's project manager and to oversee the balance of the design process, then the bidding, and then the construction. So I think I've shared with the council the timeline, the overall project timeline, the basic timeline, which stretches out to 27 or 2028, possibly longer. So so this long-term project is really driven by DEP and EPA tightening those discharge standards for both nitrogen and phosphorus. That's essentially the reason that we are in the place where we are. We have to do those upgrades. So we are not it's not lost on us that this is a very expensive, extremely expensive project. At each stage of the design process, the the cost estimates have escalated to 90% design estimate or 95% design estimate, which we recently received, also added many more dollars. So we are very concerned that the the cost of this project is out of reach for us. And I will let Helen address some of the funding sources for the project, but but in sort of a nutshell, here's what we've been doing among a bunch of other things. So one, we've been making a very strong case for zero interest loan funding to the DEP. It saves us potentially millions over the course of the loan. We've been making a case for principal forgiveness, again, saving, potentially saving us millions over the course of the loan. Advocating for more participation from DCAM. DCAM is the state agency, obviously, or not so obviously, if you don't know, that owns is owns and is responsible for the university properties, generally state properties statewide. Our argument to DCAM is that but for the presence of that particular state facility, we would not be encourage incurring roughly 30% of the cost, the capital expense on this project. So also identifying specific amounts of retained earnings that we can allocate to the project to offset the the long-term borrowing. So so that's just gives you a little bit of background of where we are, what we've been doing, what we will continue to be doing since our work really in many respects is just starting on the funding piece. So I think with that, I will turn it over to Helen Gordon of Environmental Partners. Helen's been an engineer with water and sewer projects for, I believe, over 40 years, and we've certainly benefited from her guidance on this project as well as the water treatment plant project. So with that, Helen, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. President, if I might, could I share my screen? I have a couple of slides that we just put together for the project.
Sorry about that. My my Zoom wouldn't unmute. Yeah, it should be all set now. I can see that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you find. If I may, Mr. President, what I'd like to do is quickly go through the history of the cost estimates and where they've come from and how they've progressed, and then give you a little detail about what's included in those cost estimates, and then also have a conversation about what's impacting the increase or creating the increase in costs. Okay?
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so as Michael indicated, the initial cost estimate was done associated with the comprehensive wastewater management plan, and that was finalized in 2019. But if you look at the cost estimates that were put together, the opinion of probable construction costs at the time, they they were prepared in 2017, and then it took some time for that report to be finalized. The cost estimates were based on a very cursory 10% concept layout. Some sketches showing general locations of where equipment would be and what upgrades would be required. At that time, phase one was listed at 22.9 million. Whoop, sorry. And phase two was at 9.2 million, and that was based on 2017 numbers. I have this piece of information here. It's called ENR. It's the Engineering News Record, and it's a standard that we use in the industry to upgrade opinion of probable construction costs over the course of the year, years. It is a number that is maintained and published monthly and annually, and it's specific to large cities. So this is the Boston Engineering News Record index that we follow. At the time of the initial, and this is important to understand, it tracks inflation to a certain extent. So we're able to take previously estimated costs and quickly update them to get a general feel for what the increase in cost. It's not an exact number, but it helps understand where cost increases are going. And as you can see, in 2017, it was 10,737. In 2022, excuse me, in 2020, when we were brought on, the partial design was done by Stan Tech. So we're the owner project manager, and the design is done by the design engineer, and we review and comment and do value engineering associated with it. The level of design at 50%, we got a cost estimate from the design engineer of around, at the time, 32, 33 million just for phase one alone. We do an independent cost estimate on our own and concur that it is that was concurred that that was in the vicinity of what the costs were going to be. So you can see that in 2020, the ENR went up to 11,499. So that alone indicates that there it 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 doesn't come as a surprise that we had an increase from 21.9 to 33.6. Fast forward to and that was the submission that we made to SRF for the loan. In November 2021, we got the final, the what we're calling 90% almost final documents, did an update on the cost estimate for a final cost estimate, and we were seeing that it was significantly more. The difference in the design was that we got details this time around on electrical, plumbing, instrumentation, and controls, and so forth. So rather than just carrying a percentage of overall construction in that cost estimate, we actually had real quantities that we were able to prepare the cost estimate. And we've also come up with a tentative cost estimate for phase two of 25.2. That's just based on a 10% conceptual layout at this point in time. Now, the costs involved in this phase one include the OPM design review, planning and design, our 90% OPCC, which was the 32,165. We always carry a contingency at this point, a 10% contingency prior to bidding. Once the project is bid, then that gets reduced to a 5%. Designer, construction, admin, and OPM admin. So that's oversight of the project while it's being constructed. This is an estimate of what the budget will be. And then utilities, so that would be upgrades of electrical and gas that are needed at the treatment plant that come in from the utilities. And then management of track traffic on more staff and bringing in heavy equipment and so forth. So currently, we have a total of 42.8 with non-eligible being the 2.6 approximately and eligible being 40.2. When I say eligible versus non-eligible, that is under the state revolving loan fund that you be that you are on the list to receive. I do have a breakdown, a similar breakdown for phase two and projected costs. Again, these are going, these costs are based on a 10% concept level. So OPM, designer, construction, admin. We included escalation to start and escalation in midpoint, because these are a number of years away. So this project, under the administrative consent order, must be completed by 2027. But the design and the bidding won't start till after phase one is well underway. And so we included some increases here to take into consideration at regular inflation. So let's talk a little bit about what the cost drivers are. I really think that this is something that we I I really want to augur in a little bit. I I do have to say, as Michael indicated, I've been a consulting engineer for 40 years in the industry, specifically in the municipal marketplace in New England. And over the last two years, I have never seen increases as quickly as we have been seeing associated with construction. And there's a number of different things that are pushing that. Obviously, everybody is being impacted by COVID, but there's other drivers that are weighing in. This is a multi-year project, and you really need to look at the escalation of costs from the beginning of the project to the midpoint. And when we argued in into the previous estimates that were done, that wasn't carried over from year to year. Typically, we carry a 3% to 4% to make sure that we're covering that that potential increase from year to year. Also, there's just the basic inflation on municipal marketplace. In 2020 alone, the increases were 14%, which I have never seen that much in one year. So pretty extreme. The average labor cost increase has gone up at least $5. Concrete material costs increased. When I looked at the cost estimate that was done originally, the costs were 190 per cubic yard for concrete, and we're running right now more on the 495. So you can see that big increase. And all the work we're doing at the treatment plant is concrete. Large concrete tanks, rebar, rebar has gone up incredibly. Frame slabs also, so the framing and the carpentry associated with that has gone up from 180 cubic dollars per cubic yard to 505. So it it it's, I mean, the increases are pretty astounding. And then here we have some information on the electrical material cost increases since 2017. So fitting prices are one and a half times what they were. Copper prices per pound, two times, and conduit prices per linear foot have increased three times. So you can see with this increase in costs, it's been has really impact. We're not adding additional items and equipment in to the project. The project is the same project that was envisioned in 2017. The costs of things have just increased significantly. So we wanted to speak a little bit to the funding strategy, and I'll go over this a little bit, but certainly Tony, I think, can cover it in more detail. As Michael indicated, when the project was first envisioned, it was submitted to the state under the loan funding program, and it did get on the fundable list. And because it's a nutrient removal project, it does qualify for, whoop, sorry, for 0% interest for the the fundable, the eligible portion of the project that has to do with nutrient removal. Because of the infrastructure bill that just came out from the from Washington, they're providing monies to the states to distribute through their state revolving loan programs. In Massachusetts, what Mass DEP has decided to do is appropriate 49% of the funding they're receiving for SRF to 0 to principal forgiveness and 50% to low-interest loans. Typically, the low-interest loans are around 2%. But they do fund nutrient removal projects and PFAS removal projects at 0% right now. So they've determined that that's what they're going to do. And on the principal forgiveness end of things, in conversations with what we've seen percentages that have come out over the years, we're looking at a scenario where we're estimating maybe 6.6% of the project could be fall under principal forgiveness. However, we don't know what that is going to be ultimately. But we do know that there will be principal forgiveness for the project. And as Michael said, you, sorry, very touchy here. As Michael said, you're looking at DCAM for some reimbursement also. So this is the scenario that Tony has put together to look at in terms of impact on rates. Phase two right now, looking at funding the non-eligible, which is the design piece through reserves from the sewer betterment fund, and then submitting this phase two project for funding under the state revolving loan fund. And that's all I have, Tony. I don't know if you want to follow up.
So I think.
And, Mr. President, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen. Tony, I wasn't sure if you were saying anything.
That's right. I was muted. I was gonna hand it back to Michael. I'll I'll respond if there's questions that need my input.
So I think I think, you know, you sort of get the gist of the challenges that we have based on Helen's presentation, but but in what you have in front of you is an order, sizable order. It does keep us in the running. If pass keeps us in the running for the benefits that I think Helen spelled out at the end of the presentation. But given it's a public hearing, certainly field any questions that the that the counselors have or the public has.
Okay, so Michael, I just said I conclude your presentation unless we have questions. Okay. All right. I'd now like to just move on. Thank you very much for the presentation. Just give us a few minutes to just run through the hearing format. First, entertain any general questions from the public. Is there anyone here from the public that has questions? Deborah, I do not see any questions from the public.
Carlton has his hands up.
Oh, Dr. Hunt, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Address.
Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I've had a lot of experience with treatment plant facilities and upgrades. I understand that this is tertiary nutrient removal plant. I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure what phase one and phase two involve. It wasn't clearly stated. So I'd like to understand that a little bit. It wasn't clearly stated, so I'd like to understand that a little bit. And the other question I have is, what alternative energy sources are you considering for this particular treatment facility? Are we going to look at small wind? Are we going to look at solar? Are we going to look at other alternative energy options? And has that been priced in? And the other last question I would have is, is I did attend a year or two ago, a tertiary treatment removal that was solar-based and looked incredibly efficient in terms of removing nutrients, and I didn't know if that was factored into the cost or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I would, I would, I can answer the first question, the first, phase one, phase two. Phase one is the nitrogen removal, which the E P has prioritized. Phase two would be the phosphorus removal, which they've granted a little more time for. But on the alternative energy questions, I would defer to Helen on that one.
So the project was conceived and approved at the comprehensive wastewater management level, and that was prepared and accepted by Mass D E P as the approach for the nitrogen removal and the phosphorus removal at the treatment plant. Standard, the new equipment will include V F Ts and so forth to minimize electricity consumption. We did not look at solar, and that was not, or other alternatives for additional support for energy sources at the plant. This is an upgrade of an existing wastewater treatment plant on a very, very tight site. The footprint is very small, and there is not much space for anything additional. It's bounded on all sides by either wetlands or a river.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Hunt, do you have another question?
Yes, please. The town has lots of several large parcels that the town owns that could be solarized so that, in fact, we could develop a solar source for this. It would take a little bit of work, and it could also be a revenue source for the town if we make it big enough. So I just, I just think the town needs to start thinking a little bit more. I chair the Energy Committee, and I think we need to think a little bit more on the alternative energy sources. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Are there any other general questions from the public? Okay, moving on, is there anyone from the public speaking in favor of the project? Anyone speaking in favor of the project? Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition? Anyone from the public speaking in opposition?
Mute everybody, and then you have to
Ever, is it possible to mute our business? Okay, moving on, do we have any questions from the council? Council, what?
Great presentation. I think I've seen a lot of the material before as we've evolved this. My question, which I'm surprised didn't come from the public, do we have any idea of the impact of rates based on this project phase one and phase two? And when those might, might kick in?
So, Mr. President, if I could, I'll defer to Mr. Salanti for some guidance on that one.
Absolutely.
Thank you. There's going to be a significant increase that we'll be looking at putting in place this coming fourth quarter or first quarter of F Y twenty-three. So last quarter of F Y twenty-two, first. We anticipate we will need to increase the rates by eighty-five percent. Then, as we move forward, as the project unfolds and work moves towards the second phase, we will have a slight midpoint, because I'm planning on using some additional reserves, holding off the need to increase the rates further until 2025. Anticipate a twenty-five percent increase. And then for the last phase, we really don't know. We're only at ten percent design, and I will hold judgment on that aspect of it.
Hey, council, what, anything else? Any other questions from the council? Councilor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Gordon, for the presentation. The, the issue with me is not so much the need. The concerns that I have, and I hope that we, I at least leave this hearing feeling more comfortable as to why such an increase. So perhaps most of my questions might be for the town manager. And, and I assume tonight, the hearing is on just phase one. Phase two will come later for an appropriation. I, because I haven't heard anything about phase two until tonight. And I saw that number is about as much as the phase one was back in 2017. So phase two will come later in another appropriation for us?
Correct.
That's correct, okay. So getting back to what council would ask, the eighty-five percent increase to, but the potential eighty-five percent increase to the ratepayers is based just on this loan for forty million dollars. And there'll be, there'll be another rate increase for phase two, which would be probably pretty substantial, because that's about twenty-six million now. That's a lot of money. And I guess my question is, what was the, why has it taken so long to get these numbers, first of all? And when, when was environmental partners first brought on? Because their letter to us is dated November twenty-second, and I'm sure that their work was done, was done timely. But when were they brought on board? As when you compare that to the timeframe of when we approved this, which was in the spring of 2019?
I would have to defer, I don't, the, the exact timeline, council, I'd have to
When were they, when were they hired to, to do their due diligence to bring forth an estimate? Because we approved, we approved the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in 2018. And then six months later, we were, that work was done, and there was a cost estimate done. And we approved the cost of thirty-two million dollars in May, May or June of 2019. So somebody had to do something to give us a thirty-two-million-dollar number. And then now, in the environmental partner's letter to us or to you dated November 2021, was, was alerting us of this nine-million-dollar increase.
So I'll defer it. Helen, do you want to go through the timeline and the estimate, creation of the estimates? That'd be great.
Absolutely. So just to, I don't know if you want me to bring up in the PowerPoint or just verbalize it? Mr. Galliar.
I guess my question is, is when were you brought on board?
We were brought on board in 2020 as the owner project manager. And at that time, the ten percent concept had been done. Stan Tech was already under contract to do the design, and we're moving ahead with the preliminary design report, which was our first opportunity to review something. So at that point, we reviewed the P D R from Stan Tech and then went and looked at the original cost estimate as well. So that was in 2020 when we gave the cost estimate of the thirty-three-point-six-ish number. And then in 2021, the design was progressed to, from a fifty percent in 2020 to the ninety percent in 2021.
So at what point does the town seek financial assistance through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund? At what point do they do that?
That was done, let's say, you were on the intended use plan. I'm trying to remember. For 2020, so August of 2020.
Okay. So your, your letter to the town manager states, November twenty-second, twenty-one, the town bridge order recently applied for financial assistance through the Clean Water State Revolving
Okay, so I'm sorry, let me be specific then, I'm sorry. So the first time you apply is in 2020 to get on the list. And then the subsequent year is when you submit the plans and specs. So that would have been October 2021.
Okay. So, Ms. Gordon, and I know environmental partners has a lot of experiences. Is, is this timeline normal? Is this about how long it takes to go from A to Z?
Yes, it really does. So the, the way this, the safer revolving loan fund and typically what would happen in a normal year without COVID is the town would have had to appropriate funds by June of 2021 in order to ensure that this project could be funded. But because of COVID and all the challenges associated with that, they have changed their regular schedule. But typically, you get on an intended use plan. That comes out the beginning of, it should have come out the beginning of 2021, and it didn't come out till April of 2021. So you didn't know how much you were getting till then. And then we submitted the design in October as much as was done. And now we're going to be borrowing funds. You need to be signed up and with the contractor by June of 2022. So it's usually a three-year process from when you submit the project for funding and when you go forward with the, the, the project, a two-year, two-to-three-year process. So it's not unusual for this period of time. Yeah.
So my next question to Michael, how much money can we get in help? I mean, I mean, I hate to see us borrow forty million dollars knowing, well, maybe we have to, that the ratepayers are going to have to pay if, in fact, we really may only need to borrow, you know, half of that. I don't know. How much money is out there that we can get assistance with? This is a tremendous amount of money, and this is just phase one. This is just phase one.
So I, I think that's the, no pun intended, that's the sixty-four-thousand-dollar question. The appropriation, and this is true of all projects we do, certainly all projects that involve an appropriation and bond authorization. We don't actually go out to bond until the project is completely finished. So we have a period of time between now and when we finish the project that we can press DCAM for additional funding. We'll go after ARPA funding, you know, much more than, than, you know, than the standard allocations. State has a bucket of ARPA funding that's unextended as, thus far. So, so we've got a lot of work to do, and that's when I alluded to the fact that, you know, our work is, is just starting on this project in many ways, although we've worked very hard up to this point. But, but really, the hard work in terms of trying to secure funding has only just, just begun. So, so we'll look for any amounts of money that can offset the capital expense here. We'll look at ARPA funding, we'll look at earmarks through the legislature, we'll look at federal funding. You know, we'll, we'll not leave any stone unturned when it comes to trying to secure funds. So the numbers, you know, that Helen uses and the numbers that Tony has used are, you know, rightly so conservative, you know, that their, their assumptions that they make is, is, are that we will not get DCAM any additional funding from DCAM, that we won't get ARPA funding and so forth. So, so that's the right way to do these estimates, and that's the right way to, to begin to generate estimates on, on future rates. But, but as I say, our work as a team and council included will be to do everything we can to secure additional funding from wherever source that might be. But right now, the biggest pot of money is obviously ARPA funds.
Right, and I think that I'd be feel more comfortable voting on something when I, when I know how much money we will get back. That's all. And plus, I know the presentation, you know, mentions the construction cost increase. You know, then you, you talk to some people, they say that those costs will come down. So, I mean, maybe we should delay this until we see what construction costs do come down. But, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable with this, because I just don't think that, again, you know, the tax bills came out a couple of weeks ago, and there was some bantering from residents and taxpayers about their increase. And, you know, here tonight, we're having a public hearing on a forty-million-dollar project, and we, we had one citizen asking two questions pretty much on the, the science behind it. And, and the cost is what is gonna, is going to get some phone calls from people when, when that happens. So I just think we need to really be careful moving forward with this, at this cost. Thank you. Well done.
Okay, Councilmore.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I think along the same lines, I'm also just trying to make sure and just have my cost, and also what happens if we say no. So I guess that's maybe on the design side. So maybe first on the cost side, I certainly understand the, the increase in the cost of supplies and labor. But you also talked about how there's sort of been this evolution in design. And so I'm just trying to get a sense of how much of the cost is just more clarity on the design? Right, is the design resulted in ten things instead of five, and therefore it's more expensive versus like the actual supplies? I'm not sure, Helen, maybe if that's a question that you could just, I don't need the exact number, but just give me a sense of how much of this cost increase is driven by design clarity versus supply price increase?
The larger percentage is cost increase. I do have to tell you that. There is some design clarity in terms of specific sizes of equipment. Maybe one or two pieces of equipment that wasn't initially in the cost estimate. More clarity, when we talk about more clarity in design, it's usually around the, the costs you see with electrical instrumentation controls and plumbing, because it's such a high, in a ten percent cost estimate and a ten percent concept, you use percentages of the overall cost of the project as what electrical will be, what H F A C will be. Because this is an upgrade of a treatment plant and an upgrade of a facility, it tends to be more costly because you're dealing with some existing buildings that you can't do any, certain part of the structure you're not addressing. So some of it you have to shore up more in order to make sure that you're increasing the longevity of the entire facility, the same as the new equipment. So that in of itself, upgrading an older facility does cost more than building a brand-new facility. So there is some, you can't compare a new treatment plant to an old treatment plant cost. I don't know if that helps, Mr. Moore.
I think it does. I think my takeaway from that is it's probably a combination of both supplies being the bigger percentage, but some material percentage is just clarity on the design. And so maybe if I could just ask my quick follow-up question. You know, I think as we see the economics change, I do wonder if there are opportunities then to change the design side of that equation. of that equation to better align with sort of the economics maybe that we were expecting or hoping to kind of pass back. Um, or, you know, is the design sort of what it is? And, and that part has already been like thoroughly, um, poked up?
So part of our role and responsibility is the OPM is to look at the design and make recommendations associated where we may, may be able to save money. Um, and we have done that. So we have refined the design as much as possible. Um, the equipment, see equipment and, um, the costs are based on calling vendors and getting quotes from vendors. So they certainly are the, um, a budget number again. Uh, will not be what the bid number is. I will share with you this though. Um, environmental partners, uh, as I indicated previously, we have an independent cost estimator that we work with regularly. Uh, he is in this industry. The cost estimates that we've been putting forth for our clients over the last two years have been right in the pack of the bidding. So, um, we are hopeful that you'll see less. Part of the challenge is, this is the cost estimate is our opinion of probable construction costs based on the 90% design, based on what we know right now about the marketplace, the construction place, the lack of available talented labor, um, everything that comes into play associated with the costs of construction. When you're going for SRF funding, the cost estimate drives what the state requires you to appropriate at either town meeting or town council or whatever your particular, um, governmental structure is for the community. So for SRF to get the loan, there needs to be a, um, article that says we approve to borrow up to X amount, X amount of a percent. If you don't go up that far, you don't have to borrow it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Souza.
Yes, I, I'm just curious about what percentage of increased capacity will be realized by all of this work being done on our plant over its current capacity?
This is not an upgrade to increased capacity of the treatment plant.
Any other questions, Counselor Souza?
No, we're just curious because it wasn't that long ago. We were told we were reaching our maximum with all this new construction.
Yeah, I mean, uh, and Michael could probably answer better than I could. As I understand it, Counselor Souza, um, we could build a massive facility, but we're capped at our discharge rate. Uh, the river can only handle and and clean out the discharge from the wastewater treatment. So although this project seeks to reduce some of the discharge phosphorus and those other things, our capacity, I don't believe can grow. Um, is there any other counselors with any other questions? So, uh, looks like we have Counsel Chase.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, if I could please just, uh, uh, through you, a direct, direct question to, uh, to Mr. Dutton, the, um, uh, the letter that we've received, um, uh, from Helen's, uh, firm indicates, it, it speaks to the $9 million, uh, shortfall. And it, um, describes that amount as being necessary for appropriation in order for the town to take full advantage of, um, interest and, uh, and prints a certain amount of principal forgiveness. Uh, do you agree with that conclusion that in fact it is necessary to provide, um, right away for the appropriation of that amount of $9 million?
Well, I think, I think as Helen pointed out, um, you know, the SRF process requires that the appropriation be made that's, that is supported by the, the most recent uh, cost estimate. So in order for us to continue, and Helen certainly can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think for us to continue through the SRF process, which we're well into now, um, we need by a certain date, we need to, uh, approve the appropriation that's in front of you. Um, and admittedly, you know, it's, uh, it's, you know, we talk about it in the office, but it's being between a rock and a hard place, you know, because we don't, we don't want to sacrifice the potential, uh, low interest, low or no interest loan. Uh, and we certainly don't want to sacrifice principal forgiveness, but on the flip side, you know, it's a, it's a, uh, you know, almost an unfathomable number to stomach. Um, so it sort of, sort of goes, I think, to, to, uh, Counselor Moore's, uh, question, which I don't, I don't think got answered. Very well, but, but maybe if you would indulge me, I could ask Helen what, what the implication, the precise implications are, um, results are if, if we don't vote it or if we delay or, um, or if it's, you know, we, we don't vote a new number, we keep the old one. What's the implication?
So the implication is that in order for you to receive loan funds, you have to have a agree to that appropriation. Um, what the state would do is say that it doesn't meet what the estimate of the construction cost estimate is, and therefore they'll drop you from the list for this go-around and you'd have to resubmit and try again. And that would also put you in jeopardy of being out of compliance on the administrative consent order that you negotiated with the federal government.
Understood. Thank you.
Counselor Wood?
Uh, two, two quick things. First, uh, an administrative question or parliamentary question. Um, this is through you to, uh, Attorney Rollins. Is it, is, given that, um, you know, we had to reschedule our budget and finance meeting until next week, is it better to keep the hearing open, uh, or close the hearing and just, uh, move the, the vote till later?
I mean, I think you can go either way. You, you can certainly keep the hearing o- open, not move to close it. I mean, we, I don't think there's really practically speaking, a preferable way to do that one way or the other. I mean, closing it's fine too, just so we can move on from the public hearing aspect of it. Um, so I, I don't think procedurally or parliamentary wise, it, it really matters.
Okay. So, so my, my question, um, back to the team here is i- if we were to take a, a path that did not result in the, you know, the, the loan order of, what is it, 40, 40 some odd million dollars? And that were to delay the project and we exceeded the, the boundaries negotiated as as, uh, the, the PM just said, um, wha- what's the penalty to the town in that case, Michael? Um, you know, what, what risks do we take if we delay the project hoping that construction costs come down in the future and make it more affordable?
Uh, I think if we do it unilaterally, um, I think as, as Helen alluded to, I think the DEP, uh, and/or the EPA would issue daily fines. Uh, ultimately, you know, they, they kind of, um, can control the process to some extent in that way. I think, you know, certainly it behooves us and, and we have had, uh, a lot of conversation with, uh, EPA and DEP. Um, if, if there is an opportunity, and I say this more on the phosphorus side, but uh, if there's an opportunity to delay, uh, because we think it's going to, uh, a delay may result in, in a, uh, de-escalation of construction costs, then that's a conversation I think we would be having with, uh, DEP and EPA to try to, uh, make an amendment to the administrative consent order. Um, I, based on what, what, uh, Environmental Partners has told us and, and the industry is telling us, um, I don't know that we'll see significant decreases to justify the request for a delay over time. But again, I, I would, uh, probably defer to Helen on, on that one.
Um, i- 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 it's really hard to say what EPA will do. Um, it depends on what the current, um, political, um, agenda is for EPA at any given point in time. Um, so sometimes it's more focused on regulations. Sometimes it's more focused on fines, to be totally honest with you. Um, I think that one of the things that the team has talked about is getting phase one underway and having a conversation with EPA about what phase two would look like and the timing of that. Um, they were pretty adamant during the conversation about extending the period already for phase one, which we did do. Um, that they were not going to move the dime on fa- on the phase two 2027 deadline. So they allowed the cha- uh, uh, and extended, uh, deadline for fa- the phase one, but not uh, phase two at this point in time. So we did get extra time for phase one.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Gallagher, you muted?
Just, just a quick question to the, to the town manager or the finance director. The rate payers will absorb the cost of this project when, when we use the term rate payers, for example. I think I know the answer. I just want to hear it. Um, is that i- is the rate payer every taxpayer in town or every homeowner in town or every homeowner that's tied into the town sewer? Who are the rate payers?
In, in this case, it's, the rate payers are only those properties that are tied into the sewer.
Thank you.
Did you have a second question, Counselor Gallagher? No. Okay. I just want to move to Counsel Perry has now an opportunity yet.
No problem. I just wanted to ask again, what was the, what was the deadline we had on phase one again?
Um, the, I'll defer to Helen on that.
So phase one will be is 2024 and it's an 18 to 24 month project.
So we're up against it as far as the time goes.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and that's, that's the deadline for it to be done.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Counselor Wood?
I just want to follow up on Counselor Gallagher's question because, um, someone like, uh, to board or other septic system people paid fee to the, to the process plan. I assume those fees will go up by some measure because of this project as well. Is that right?
I would, I would expect so. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other counselors? Okay, this is probably the hottest pot of being president is waiting till last through all these comments and questions, but to, to you, Michael, just a quick question. Uh, non-eligible reimbursement costs, uh, to DCAM, you have sort of earmarked and the hopeful earmark of about, uh, 3.2 million. Um, why only non-tangible and, uh, not the total cost is sort of part of the question? And then does that 3 million represent, and I, and I think I heard this in the presentation, uh, approximate 30% of the input into the treatment facility is coming from the university? Is that the number?
Correct. So, so let me be a little bit clear. So the, the, there are eligible costs to the project and there are non-eligible costs. So eligible costs, which, which are far, far, far outweigh the ineligible costs are, uh, those, uh, funds that, that are, um, uh, that we can, that we can use, uh, SRF funding for. So the state revolving loan program. So separate and apart from all of that, we intend to go and make the case to DCAM that, um, 30% of this plant is there because of Bridgewater State University. So our feeling is that, that, uh, DCAM has some response, capital responsibility, uh, to the town to offset up to 30% of the capital cost. Um, realistically, I don't know that we can get to 30% through DCAM. Um, but if we can, I would call that, you know, a major victory, uh, because it would reduce the, um, you know, the amount of the project down substantially, uh, the amount that rate payers would have to pay substantially. So, so that, um, so the SRF funding is something that's in process. Um, you know, we've had conversations and we've gotten, you know, assurances from the state revolving loan, uh, folks that, that we can avail ourselves of that, uh, that loan pool for, for low, no interest borrowing and also principal forgiveness. Um, that's separate and apart from us going to DCAM and making the case that they should participate in the total capital cost of all phase one, phase two of the project.
Okay. And has there ever been a discussion about, uh, DCAM facilities maybe being rerouted to the state facility and their own wastewater treatment facility and freeing up 30% of our capacity? Has that ever been discussed?
Um, it, through this process, I, I don't believe we've had that conversation. I think through the, uh, comprehensive waste, wastewater management plan, there, there was some discussion there. Um, but again, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm not aware of the specific nature of those conversations. I don't know if Helen, um, recalls in the conference of CWMP if, if that was there.
I have, I'd have to re, um, look at that. That was, uh, prepared by, um, Weston and Sampson.
Okay. And, uh, just another follow-up question, uh, Boris out. Is there anything proposed in this project to make any safety improvements to that street out to Plymouth Street? Um, as part of this project, either widening or repaving?
Uh, I believe that's, that is a portion built into the project. Um, I don't recall if it's phase one or phase two though.
And I think Helen could maybe answer this because I was watching her facial expression earlier when this was mentioned, but when we're looking at, it, it seems to me in my opinion, listening to the holistic story here is that, you know, our timing was somewhat poor in May of 19. We were just then at the end of that year going to come into the height of the pandemic through 2020. And certainly, uh, as you described in the presentation, these escalating construction crop costs and, um, I think as a town, we hit it really well when we went out to bid for our elementary school where a lot of G- GCs were actually afraid of not getting work and sort of cut the fat out. Uh, and that isn't taking place right now. Um, there's plenty of work and certainly the market there, but any anticipation that, um, it, it sounds like to us, you know, the one good thing we have is the financial package. Although a majority of this is going to fall on the rate payers, uh, for sewer, but the interest rate and the numbers of potential reimbursement are really, really good. The things we can't control is construction. So I'm opposed to delaying this any more than it's been delayed. But as we look out over the, um, cost estimation and getting actual orders and any sense that the economy will right itself and supply chain issues will bring some of those costs down?
I
Or too tough to say?
So this is what I would say, um, all things remaining equal right now, if we don't see any other major unanticipated upsets, I would see the cost and the inflation rates not going up as high as anticipated potentially. Um, so hopefully we'll never see that 14% for a long time again, for example. Um, so I don't, uh, uh, I'm hopeful that the contingencies that we have and the escalation cost won't be as much and we'll see some savings there. I don't see costs coming down. I just don't see that in terms of, are we going to see um, concrete go back down, you know, by $300 uh, dollars per cubic yard? I don't see that happening anytime soon. We continue to have a lot of, one of the other, one of the drivers associated with this project, there is a lot of instrumentation and controls associated with it. And that's computer and technology and those costs aren't going down.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in here this evening and for the presentation, certainly. If there's
Thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I don't see any of the questions from the council. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing at 8:11 PM.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to our next meeting on February 1st.
If you have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, second, any discussion? Council Gallagher?
So Mr. President, you, you closed the public hearing and Council Wood and I motioned to continue the public hearing. So
No. We've motioned to continue the, the order, discussion of the order.
Well, don't we need to vote to close the public hearing? We can't, so my, my point is, is can we continue this discussion in two weeks or we're just simply going to vote on it? And can we allow the public an opportunity, since we're continuing this, to come in and ask questions in two weeks or not?
So you, you can, you can vote to close the public hearing and have this on for vote for you all at the next meeting, or you can vote to continue the public hearing so that there's further opportunity for more public input or to continue along the public process. So you have one of two options. You've had the public hearing for all intents and purposes. It was properly noticed. You all have gone through the public hearing. It's your call if you'd like to continue the public hearing to another date certain, keeping it open. Or if you would like to close the public hearing and then vote to have this placed on the next agenda. So you really have one of those two options.
That's what I think Council Wood said was to continue the public, continue the public hearing. That's what I think your motion was.
Oh, the, the president had closed the meeting.
And then you made a motion to continue it.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know if we needed to put on, on the closing because I don't know if closing the meeting is something we vote on.
Yeah, well, that, that was my point. I, I didn't think that we needed to vote. I was simply closing the hearing. This gets referred now is sitting in budget and finance. So there's an opportunity to continue discussion there. It also comes back from budget and finance to the council for yet another discussion, just not a hearing.
Yeah, and that's what I meant was
Feel strongly that we need to open up another actual hearing after an hour of debate. You know, that's
I'd like to, I'd rather see the public hearing continue to two weeks. Okay, I don't, I don't think we need to close. This is my view.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we have a second, is there
Well, yeah, just make a motion then to continue the public hearing. If there's a second, then you guys debate it. And if there's not enough votes to continue it, then it's closed. And if there are, then so be it. That's probably the easiest way.
Then it's just, just withdraw your second. I'll withdraw my first, then you can read.
I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my first and now make a new motion.
And I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing until our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, see, and Council Perry?
Uh, yes, I just, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd be in favor either way of doing it. The only thing I would suggest or make as an option, if we did close the hearing, if anyone had any comments or concerns relative to this at the next meeting, they could certainly make it in, you know, citizens' open forum at the beginning of the meeting. But if we wanted to look to expedite the, the process of discussion and just make it more about council discussion, I don't know if the hearing would need to stay open. But just, just, just to create, you know, just another way of approaching it, but I could go either way with it.
I think the only risk in continuing the public hearing is if you're not going to have all the same parties available to answer the same kind of questions as you have tonight. Obviously, Ed Helen, Tony could presumably be there still. But, uh, you know, as long as you guys orchestrate that as well, I'm assuming that would be part of it if, if those are your concerns, to make sure questions get answered.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, see, and then move for a roll call vote?
Mr. Colum
Continuing the hearing.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
No.
Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase?
Maybe.
Sorry, no.
No. Dr. Perry?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
It's six in favor, two opposed.
What is 8:17, going to open our second hearing, ordinance FY22-012 zoning map amendment 168, 180 Broad Street. I'm going to defer to Council Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has been floating around for a while. It's, um, the, uh, the planning board and community and economic development voted unanimously to recommend this. And what this does, it allows the developers of Perkins Foundry land, not the other Broad Street property, but the Perkins Foundry land to change the zoning there to give them the appropriate zoning they need to move forward with the next step in this process.
Okay, I'd ask, Council Gallagher, is there any type of presentation? I don't have one, no. Okay. Okay, moving on, I would first entertain. So actually, I see Jennifer's here and, Michael, is there anything from the town manager's office at all that you want to present on before we move through the next steps of the hearing?
Uh, nothing for me. I'll defer to Jennifer and, and the proponents if, if they have either a presentation or want to say a few words about the conversion of the property to part of the, from industrial to part of the central business district.
Okay, and Jennifer, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just wanted to give you the opportunity if you had anything you wanted to add.
Um, I don't, just that the planning board unanimously recommended the zoning change at their hearing. And I believe the CEDC did as well, but they can speak to that themselves. I do know that the two proponents are on the call this evening. I'm not sure if they prepared a presentation. I was not in touch with them earlier today, so that's Steve Meltzer and Jerry Wu. So if they could speak if they choose, if you'd let them.
I have no objections, Steve or Jerry, either one of you, if you'd like to make any comments related to the project.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, this is, just to be specific and to the point, this is a request to take a parcel of land that has split zoning, CBD in the front and industrial in the back, and change the entire parcel so that it is singly zoned as CBD, which would, as Mr. Gallagher says, allow us to move to the next step in the development process, which is to plan and, and head to the planning board to get permitting for a mixed-use development. Without the zoning change, we can't even take that first step. And we would ask that, that the, the council approve that.
Thank you. Jerry, do you have anything to add?
Uh, just that we, we look forward to working with the town.
Okay, excellent. I'll now move on and ask if there are any general questions from the public? Any general questions from the public this evening? Not seeing any. Is there anybody from the public speaking in favor? Anyone from the public speaking in opposition?
Colton raised this hand earlier.
Apologize. Dr. Hunt?
I'm speaking totally in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Council Wood?
Thank you. I, I've been probably attending, I've probably attended at least a half dozen meetings with the, the owners and the developers. And it's, it's been very good. And I, I think we've come to a great solution here. I just wanted to clarify for the public mostly. And maybe that we could direct this to Jennifer. There's, this is going to be entirely mixed-use, changing from industrial in the back to mixed-use, which, as people understand, is, is a mixture of residential and, and business. And there's no setback restrictions or exceptions in the order that we've seen today. And there is not intended to be in the future. Is that right?
That's, if that's correct.
Other than that, I'm in favor of this.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, see, and then I'm going to close the meeting at 8:22 PM and entertain a motion to approve ordinance FY22-012.
So move.
Any other further discussion? See, Council Wood?
I just say, so I, I'm really excited about this project. You know, we had a lot of different variations during the discussion. And we've talked about the ability to bring more vitality downtown. And I include downtown, even though I'm the representative of, of the district that includes Broad Street. I include the Broad Street area. And so, you know, after, after five o'clock, usually most of the lights of downtown are, are the Roche Brother Plaza and McDonald's and, and that, that, that area, not so much in the center of town. So I think this brings, you know, the opportunity, and I, I, I believe the developers again do a great job here, of bringing a mixture of people and probably businesses into the area to continue to expand that. You know, the Foundry has long, very long history in town. It's, it's been a, you know, a great establishment. And, but it's time to, to move on, not my words, but I, I think it's going to be a great addition as it progresses through the process. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can you see a number for roll call though?
Uh, Council, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
And moving on, next item, G, license transactions, we have none. Next item is presentations, we have none. Next is the town managers' report. First item is the Mitchell School update.
Uh, Mr. President, just a couple of items on the Mitchell School. Fortunately, not a whole lot to report. Work does continue as planned and on schedule. There are ongoing electric plumbing rough going on. Boilers being placed as the weather permits. If anybody sees the building, you can see that as weather permits, the brick veneer is, is going on the walls, exterior walls as well. Drywall is being hung and some interior priming and some finish coats are being applied. Paint, that is. I will bring your attention to one item. Over the weekend, the abnormally cold weather did cause a break in a water pipe. And that did flood an unfinished portion of the area. The contractor has removed the affected drywall and the affected insulation and will be replacing all of it. And the superintendent of schools and the OPM are both making sure that there are no issues coming out of that. But a relatively minor setback in, in what has been a pretty, pretty smooth-running project. But we're very sensitive to any school construction or any building construction in town. So we are on top of that, just to make sure there are no ancillary issues there. Timeline is still good with a projected completion date of July 8th, 2022. Next meeting of the school building committee is Tuesday, February 7th, I'm sorry, Monday, February 7th at 6:30 PM. And information, as I always say, at bridgewaterschoolproject.com. Happy to answer any questions on that one.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, see, and then moving on to COVID-19 update.
Uh, again, not a whole lot to report that isn't plastered all over the news on the night basis. Our official number, official numbers have held steady between 100 and 120 reported cases with no hospitalizations that, that we know of. But I will say that unless anybody objects, I will probably stop reporting those numbers since they're increasingly not representative of, of the actual COVID cases in town. And as I explained before, that, that is because folks that test positive, maybe testing positive with home, home kits, or they may not be testing at all. So, so I don't, don't want to give out numbers that aren't based rooted in some kind of accuracy. So as I say, unless anybody objects, I'll probably stop publicly reporting the number of reported cases, which is probably significantly lower than the number of actual cases. Regardless, vaccination rates are steady, 62% fully vaccinated, 69%, almost 70% with at least one round. We do continue to recommend that people wear masks when visiting town offices. And as I mentioned last meeting, we have implemented a mask requirement for all the employees in, in public spaces and in the town offices. We, actually, this came up, I think, last meeting. We have been, as every other town in our region or in the state, has been trying to secure home test kits with very little success. The contract, state contracts that the Department of Public Health forwarded to us and allowed us to use was very nice of them, but they have no available test kits. So there is now some movement on the federal level to mail test kits directly. We will, as soon as we get information on that, we'll, we'll spread that through our social media and website. That's about, about all I have on that, but again, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Council Wood?
I, I fully understand the fact that the home test kits really changed the dynamics of statistic gathering and reporting and things like that. But given the experience of other, other areas where the drop off hopefully is fast, how will we know when it is significantly safer to go about normal business?
Uh, that's a really good question. You know, certainly the way, honestly, the way we're kind of extrapolating the numbers that we think the infection numbers in Bridgewater is based on, based on, you know, absences from some of the larger employers, you know, the absentee rates at some of the larger employers. I, I will acknowledge that, you know, the, the drop in recorded cases probably reflects a drop in overall cases. So I'm, I'm happy, you know, to, to continue to present those numbers or at least, you know, tell you what the percentage decline is, you know, meeting to meeting, if that's of, of any help.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, see, and then moving on, next item is discussions. We have none listed here. Next item is committee reports. Any committee reports, Council Wood?
I'll just report something we've heard multiple times. So unfortunately, we had to reschedule the budget finance meeting. So you'll see under legislation action, I think there's one, two, three, four, what, five items that we can't take action on tonight. So, you know, we'll end up postponing that to our next meeting. We do, we will be meeting next Monday, 6 PM. All the, all the information's out there. Uh six P M, uh all the, all the information's out there, or will be out there soon, so. Um if anybody has any questions on that, including the the numbers for the uh capital plan and then. And the um. You know, the item you heard tonight, so um you know, please, please attend if you can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. See and then moving on to legislation for action, as mentioned by Counselor Wood. Um items. F Y twenty-two, zero, three, four, three, five, three, six, three, seven, and three, eight. Uh we cannot take any action on this evening. I'm going to move ahead to old business. We have none. Next item is new business. First item is order A. Order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero three nine, laying out and accepting a private way. Do drop lane, I'll defer to Counsel Chase.
Thank you, Mister President. Uh I'm pleased to have been asked to uh bring forward this uh action. Uh calling for the council to approve the uh laying out and acceptance of. Uh do drop lane as a public way in the town. Um. I note that uh it appears to me that all the requirements uh to do so have been uh duly observed. And um I have nothing uh further to offer on it uh personally. Uh but I do hope that the council finds this action uh favorable.
Okay, I think uh first step Counsel Chase would be to entertain a motion uh for the council's intention to lay out the way.
I would make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Counselor Moore, do we have any discussion on? Layout of the way? Okay, see and then a move for a roll call vote?
Um Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
It's eight in favor, zero opposed.
We now entertain a motion, refer this out to the planning board.
So moved.
Any discussion? See and none move for a roll call vote?
Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
And Mister Gallagher? Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Moving on, item B, order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero four zero. Transfer or contractual settlement B P A, defer to the town manager.
Mister President, uh as you know, the uh Bridgewater Police Association settled, uh we settled a contract with them, a three-year contract. This would be the. Impact of the first year uh of that contract. It's ninety-one thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars.
Excellent, thank you. Uh entertain a motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See and none, uh move for a roll call vote?
Mister Gallagher?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
And Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
That's eight in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, moving on uh to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens here wishing to speak during citizens' comments? I don't see any. I'm going to move on to council comments, starting with Counsel Gallagher.
Uh nothing tonight, Mister President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perry.
Uh, thank you. Uh, as mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, I just certainly want to uh extend my uh. Condolences to uh former council member and current uh school committee member Tim Fisk Givens on the uh passing of his father. Um, I I personally was unable to make his wake, but uh I definitely want to publicly uh extend those condolences to Tim and his family, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Chase.
Uh no comment this evening.
Thank you, Counsel Souza.
No comment this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Moore.
Uh yeah, I'd also like to extend my condolences to Tim and his family, uh also to the family of Jason Sakosha.
Thank you, Counsel Wood.
I'm gonna give you that, thanks.
Counsel Columbotus?
Uh nothing tonight, thanks.
I just have one brief comment, um just to follow up on the COVID nineteen update. The United States Postal Service will be distributing free uh at-home test kits. They've already set up their website for free delivery. Every residential address gets a limit of four, I believe. And that address is special dot U S P S dot com. Test kits, so that website's up, you can order those and they ship at the end of the month. With that being said, I will now entertain a motion to move into an executive session under M G L. Chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one little A. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, we're discussing the matter in open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. Where an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
And move for a roll call vote?
Mister Columbotus?
Yes.
Mister Wood?
Yes.
Mister Moore?
Yes.
Mister Souza?
Yes.
Mister Rushton?
Yes.
Mister Chase?
Yes.
Doctor Perry?
Yes.
Mister Moore? That's eight in favor, zero opposed.
I'm the yes too.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm going twice.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep, all right, let me just prep. All right.
Okay, you good?
Uh no, let me just stop the video.
Okay.